We're called to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for October 19th, 2017. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as our own. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the nation's representative among the United Nations.
So, first item is to approve the regular meeting agenda. Is there any changes need to come to the agenda?
No, sir. The only change we need was, from my end, was changing the titles on the resolution as Kirsten Brown requested on the Court of Communals M&amp;N to include, to identify it as a federal fiscal year rather than a local government fiscal year.
Okay. Any other changes?
No, sir. Under the new business, item E?
None, none, these made during the session.
Okay. And, all right. I know we got the handout, but I forgot that we'd added it to the agenda. So, that's good.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to withdraw item O under resolutions. A number of questions came up at the work session that we need to get answers to, I think, before we can proceed on this item.
Okay. But that's your resolution. You're welcome to move it. Okay. Any other changes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
There's a motion, second to approve the agendas. Are there any discussions? Seeing none, all those papers, second five, seeing none?
Aye.
Motion passes. Eva Regional Medical Center report, Ms. Arias. How are you today? I bet your mic's not turned on.
Let's see. How's that?
It's perfect.
All right. Very good. Thank you so much and good morning, everyone. I guess the, one thing that I want to start off by saying is, I know that on Tuesday, when I had to leave, I guess I wasn't on the agenda. Wasn't quite sure where that was, but I knew I needed to report today. But I wanted to make sure that all of you knew that our folks from UNAM Cancer Center are going to be down here today at a special board meeting, just to be introduced. As you know, anytime we have more than three board or trustee members at the table, we have to call a special meeting. And that's what this was for, so they could be introduced. From 10 to 12, though, we will have an open house in the cancer center, just so the public and all of you and any physician, patient, that wanted to come in and meet these people, talk to them, voice any of their concerns or ask any questions, they are there to do this. Dr. Willman is there today and she is over that center. And so, we're very, very pleased that we are at that point in our progress that we're able to do this. Tomorrow, we will have a physician coming in for our first day of service. Patients have already been scheduled for tomorrow. He will be reevaluating them and coming up with their treatment plan to start their chemo as soon as possible. The radiation part is going to still take a little bit longer. We've got the equipment on order. As soon as it gets here, it will be installed. It has to be calibrated. It has to be recertified. As soon as that's done, then the radiation piece will again be resumed. So, any questions on that?
So, you're actually starting chemo therapy tomorrow?
No. Tomorrow, the physician will be seeing them and evaluating them. I don't know if he will say, yes, we can go ahead with the patient to go ahead with a chemo. It all depends on what his assessment is of the patient.
Okay.
Now, anything else on that topic? All right. Next thing I want to tell you is that we are in the process right now of taking one of our pods, which is Pod 2, a MedSurg teleunit. And as, right now, they're all double rooms. We're in the process of converting those rooms to private rooms. And this is for the privacy of our patients and the convenience of our patients. Our current census right now, our daily census, is allowing us to do this. So, we're starting, we're redoing each room to make it as nice as possible for our patients. Therefore, the patients will have their own private bath. They won't have to share that. Now, we're not doing any reconstruction. It is only aesthetics to make it nicer for our clientele and all of our patients in the community. However, if our census did explode at one, at any given time, we're leaving it such that we could put another bed in the room and convert it back to a double if we needed to at any given time. The second thing, and we will have a mock-up room. When we get the mock-up room ready, I'll invite you all to come look at it, give your opinion of it, and we'll start moving forward. Of course, you know, there is an expense to this and we're trying to minimize that so that we can do as many rooms as possible. The next thing I wanted to share with you is that we did, if you didn't read the paper, we did open our ambulance service out at the members. We're very, very excited about it. Two of our staff members, who also work in a restaurant, a family restaurant out there, have, and they're also volunteer at the fire department out there, will also be taking the radio and will respond to any 911 call that dispatch gives them. So, we're very excited about that. Our attending of you that would like to go out and do a tour, feel free to do so, just let us know so we can make sure we have staff there and available. We have been in the midst right now of doing an evaluation of all of our departments, as you know, and all of our contracts. And we have found that some of the contracts and practices that have been going on for years and years were probably not, at this time, appropriate. And so, we're in the middle of reevaluating and rewriting contracts to make sure that we are in compliance with the law. Times have changed and unfortunately, some of the wording on our contracts have not changed with the times. So, we are stopping those processes and making sure that we are in compliance. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. Very good. I have also had a meeting, as of yesterday, with Alex Rodriguez, our city manager, and regarding the stocking of supplies on our, on their ambulances and drugs primarily. Both of us agree that this has not been a good process. And I think that he was somewhat surprised when I showed him the documentation and the processes that has been in place. And both of us are working together to make sure that those are clean, crisp processes that no one can question. And I will share one with you that I was most concerned about, and that is on drugs, narcotics, and any medication that is coming out of our pharmacy. There is no clean process at this time that can link any drug that we are giving to the fire department, to a patient. And that is what is concerning to us, especially when we're talking about chain of command for narcotics. So, he and I both decided that we are going to pull a team together. If we continue giving this as a free service to this group, we have to make sure that the processes are so crisp that the DEA will approve of this. And I have found him to be extremely good to work with as a counterpart. And I will give you further notice on that. I think we have our first meeting set up for next week and we will be dissecting that process to make sure it is a clean one. So, that's my report. I'm open for questions?
Questions?
Thank you for that report. Appreciate the information. I do have a question and I recognize that, you know, that you have come into the middle of a lot of uncomfortable situations at the hospital. I think, you know, a hospital is hugely important to this community. It generates about $100 million or so in economic activity, one of the largest employers in the county. And all indicators would say that the county has lost confidence in the hospital and that employee morale is suffering. Could you please tell us what specific things you are doing now and have plans, say, for the next six months or so?
Oh, absolutely. As you know, the issues that I faced when I first came here were unlike any other position that I have taken in any other situation. Usually, what I do is come in to revamp things, streamline things, make things efficient and run more smoothly. The situation that I came in on my first week is that we had Meditech 6 go live, which was extremely troublesome and, as it should be, as any IT upgrade or replacement would be. But at the same time, had the issue with what was going on with the transition with the cancer treatment centers and who had that. Great public outcry, great concern from our public that I had to listen to and I had to understand. But that train had left the track by the time I got here. There was no going back on it. And I had to do every single thing I could to address the issue, to get that service line back in our facility so that we could continue giving care to our community. At the same time, I was evaluating the financial structure of our facility. And after we got the contract going and we've got plans and action plans on the cancer center and Meditech 6, then I had to reevaluate our leadership structure and the financial structure of our organization. And I can tell you that any organization now, it doesn't matter if it's a hospital or any business, when they're top-heavy, you have to reevaluate, do I need these people because I cannot do without my caregivers? Because that is our business, is taking care of patients. So, we did a reduction in force, most of which were administrative positions. I got phone call after phone call saying, thank you so much for taking care of business. I got phone call after phone call by saying, what are you doing? Are you crazy? Blah, 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 blah. And I can tell you that I have never worked in a city that has not come together for the hospital. And this is very concerning to me as someone who wants to not only live here and work here for the rest of my career, but I have this huge responsibility. I am held accountable by every single person in this city, every person. I am held accountable for every commissioner. I am held accountable for every, by every board of trustees. And I am held extremely accountable for every caregiver that works in our hospital. There was a reduction in force before I came here, which did affect clinical staff. That is very upsetting to staff. And then you have another reduction in force, whether they agree or not, is upsetting and it's troubling, coupled by the venomous articles that have been out regarding their leader in the newspaper, which I think is extremely destructive and non-supportive and very isolated to oneself instead of the whole. This has got to charge an area of great concern, great unhappiness, and great instability. But I hold the public responsible for that. I do not hold any caregiver responsible for that because they are only a product of the culture, of the culture which has been allowed to breed. I do hold people accountable for their actions. I do hold people accountable if they have been rude to patients and families or neglectful. I do hold people accountable when they are in charge for the financial help and reporting of our institute. And that has not been approached in a professional manner and of the detail that needs to be there. So, if that creates an avenue of change, then that's the way it has to be because we cannot continue going down a road of destruction. That is why I am here. I have all the compassion in the world for people, but I do demand accountability. And I do demand and expectation throughout our facility of providing safe, quality care for our patients. And when people are held accountable for doing that, and they have not been held accountable in the past by CEOs, then that causes upset. Well, I beg all of you to think about it. That is my responsibility as being the leader of a hospital, is to make sure that those things are attended to and attended to by the right people. So, what I have started to doing, instead of having this massive town hall, which used to be held in the courtyard, is I've started holding individual department town halls so that we can have a more free discussion of the issues, of the problems, of the issues that are facing healthcare in general and the issues that are facing our hospital. I don't think that there is any person that works at the hospital, that lives in our community, that wants to see change in our hospital except for the best. They don't want to see a hospital sold. They don't want to see it going to someone else. They want to make sure that whoever is running that hospital has the compassion and the knowledge to lead that, lead that organization in a fruitful manner, a manner in which we can assure that this hospital is alive and vibrant for our community for years to come. That does not take a soft-mannered person to do that. It takes someone strong, strong of conviction, strong of knowledge, and tough enough to withstand all of the backstabbing, ugly comments, vindictive speeches that I have seen. I keep my focus. My focus is not being nice. My focus is getting our hospital to the next level, the next level of quality and the next financial status. I am recruiting in physicians. I have just signed on a contract with another surgeon who is coming in and he wants to do trauma. That means that less people will be leaving our community. That means that less resources and financial resources will be leaving our community. I am in the process, in November, of interviewing a pediatrician coming from Corpus Christi, Texas, who wants to live here, who wants to be in this community. I have resources out looking for a urologist and an EMT because I want to bring these specialists in so nobody has to leave here. But I urge the public, and I urge any of the commissioners, that when you hear gossip, when you hear things that probably don't make sense, it's probably not true. But I urge all of our community that when they hear things, instead of repeating it, instead of putting editorials in the paper that are vindictive and only self-centered, please come to my office. Please give me that opportunity to explain what the situation is, what our plan is, and where we need to be going as an entity. Are you? Is that all?
Ms. Arias, I really do appreciate you coming forward and chatting with us about this and I thank you for your presence. I wanted to ask, though, I know you're talking about keeping people in Grand County. And recently, we lost Yucca Lodge, which I'm sure you're aware of, at Fort Bear. And has there been any thought of replacing any of those services through our hospital for an extra, for an extra stream of revenue?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I can't share all the details on that, but I can tell you that the hospital cannot stand alone. No hospital can stand alone any longer. You must look at partnerships. You must look at going out in the community and stretching the tentacles of your entity to be able to reach the majority of the people, not just in your city, but in the county. So, yes, we are looking at opportunities to help those folks and to also help the people right here.
And also, what days of cash do we have as of now?
So, right now, it's 55 days.
Fifty-five.
And let me just touch on the financial piece of this. As you know, because we had a lack of service through the cancer center for the 90-day period, which was supposed to be there per contract as a transition phase, and that did not occur, there was a true financial deficit. And that, we see the majority of that being through our outpatient services such as pharmacy, lab, and radiology. We can link all of these back to those services and they're all outpatient. Our inpatient admission was up slightly from last year at the same time, so this is good. But when you, when you think about the hole that was created and the void that was created, it can totally, every penny of it, be linked back to this. So, with services starting now, and we will start doing billing by the end of the month, by the end of November, we should start see everything being regenerated. So, by the end of the year, we should be in full force again. So, that, plugging that hole and having that service coupled with bringing new business in, should leave us in a very, very nice cash situation. So, what is now is not what it's going to be by the end of the year.
That's all, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you. Next item is public input. During this portion of the meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question-and-answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. So, at this time, the commission will stand for public input. Is there any public input today? Linda, you were first.
Is the mic still on? I think it is, yes. I'm just not loud enough.
You can be.
Okay. My name is Linda Mickelson. I want to visit again about the cancer center. I'm sure that's no surprise to any of you. And I have brought updated financials that they finally got to me for the month of August. So, I've given you January through July, so I'll hand those out. One of the things that I asked for recently, because I kept hearing about the salary of the CFO, Jo Back, and I have no doubt that she's very qualified at what she does, but I was alarmed to learn, and this was provided by the attorney, that she makes $93 an hour. And I'm told that it's not unusual for her to work 80 hours in a week. The president only makes $400,000. I would encourage you commissioners for what you can do. I would encourage the board of trustees to seek, to hire somebody permanently instead of her being a temporary or an interim position. And if she wants to stay here, I think that's great, but I think that salary has got to be negotiated. It's my understanding she has a housing allowance, that there's a per diem for meals, that she has a travel allowance so that when she wants to travel home to see her family members, she's able to do so. And so, this is one issue on the financial side that I think has got to be addressed. I don't think we can afford to pay her those kind of wages, so I appreciate your time.
Thank you. More public input? The guy in the green shirt there? Yeah. I think it's green. Is it black? Black.
Good morning. My name is Richard. Last name is Bernhardt. I'm not related to a dead race card driver. I wanted to come this morning, Ms. Arias is very impressive, I got to tell you. That's really good news for me. I like to hear this kind of stuff. But I came this morning because I've been in a lot of, I've been in four hospitals. So, I kind of know by now as an emotional survey as to what they really feel like. Last weekend, I was in an ambulance with an EMT. It's no big deal. And because we had a lot of time on our hands, I started, I brought up the conversation about the hospital. He didn't bring it up, I brought it up. And he was really depressed. I mean, like, it didn't start out that way. I really asked him, what do you feel like? He said, well, I'm really depressed. There's a lot of bad morale. You know, nurses that are really distressed, they don't know what their schedule is going to be. Everybody had one complaint after the other. Basically, he was not saying that we're not trying. He says that things are really crazy and we're really insecure. I listened to Ms. Arias and I really am glad that she said a lot of the things that she said. I think that that gives me a certain degree of hope because of her professionalism. I think that that's a really good sign that we're going to get on solid ground. I don't know anything at all about hospital management. I don't know probiotic from a proctologist, what is that, a blood doctor? Proctologist, is that right? Okay, whatever. I don't know the difference. I don't know how to manage a hospital, but I do know some things about a hospital, right? I know that they have a restaurant there. That restaurant is really good. I mean, it's one of the best in town. People come to town and I say, you know, where do we eat? So, Diane's or Vicky's. Well, the hospital, they think I'm crazy. You know, eat at a hospital? You've got to be kidding me. It's not. It's really good. You probably have all been there. If you haven't, you should have. And it's open like seven days a week. It's great. But it's not. It's open five days a week. This is just an example, since I really don't know that much about managing hospitals. It's open five days a week. It used to be open to seven. The reason is because they have to cut back. They have to cut back because they're rather not getting enough people there to really fulfill a functionable restaurant. Part of the way you deal with that is you reach out. You let people know that you're there. You know, you begin to take an initiative to make sure that the community is aware. That will bring in the business that you need to stay, to stay open. You don't go backwards. You don't start slashing things. They're of a real benefit to the community. And I don't think, in some respects, that the hospital is aware of some of these things that they do, that people, maybe they aren't for bad PR, some of these letters that she's referring to, that you really do need to reach out to the community to let them know that there are other things that are available besides cancer treatment. Talk about the hospital. I don't know whether you remember this or not, they used to have a thing where there was Meet the Doctor. They'd go out and they would have a conversation about what the doctor, what the doctor is, what they do, you know, their history, blah, 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 cookies. You know, it was a really kind of soft way to get into the community, to let people know that, yeah, indeed, we do a lot of stuff there, but it is, in the long run, it's the tenderness of reaching out to a community in healthcare. Because healthcare is tough to deal with on many levels. It's tough to provide it. It's tough to get it. You know, people get into a hospital and they're really grateful. They're more grateful when they get out. So, that's really an important aspect. And beyond, beyond the restaurant thing, which is just an example, I read from a PBS report the other day that this year, 70 rural hospitals are going to be closed. Last year, about the same. They projected even more next year. Every time this happens, you know what happens. I don't have to tell you. Community's dying. You lose millions of dollars, 100, 10 million dollars. You just lose it in your community. And you lose the people that allowed you to make that money. They're gone. That really, if somebody had Silver City on a list of they're going to go and move here and they find out that the hospital is in the trouble that it's in, I guarantee you, Silver City's scratched off that list. That's just the way that it is. So, many people have the opportunity to get great care here. I've had that. You know, it's really good. Nurses, fabulous people. But in the long run, if you can't keep the people that, or you can't find the people to move here, or you can't provide the service, or you can't work with other hospitals in the region, Daming, Los Cruces, or whatever, to make sure you have a network to do this, I'm going for five. I'm done. Then the community's weakened and you lose a lot more than $100 million a year. I'm leaving town. I got to go. You know, my healthcare can't be provided here. But in the long run, I think it's going to be good with the community if it reaches out and looks at alternatives like letting the hospital be bought, like bringing in a network between Daming and Los Cruces. That way, you cut out a lot of your overhead that she's talking about. Just so to, we did have the hospital, no doubt about it. We need to have morale up, no doubt about it. We need it to be fiscally responsible, no doubt about it. But you've got to reach out to the community in more ways than simply giving a forum or 100-person-in-attendance stuff like, you know, rah, rah, rallying. You've got to do things to the community that are tender and You gotta do things to the community that are tender and informative. I don't know what that is altogether, but I think you know when to do it. I like the hospital. I want it to stay here. Q and A, whatever, that's it. Thanks. Anything else?
Good question. Thank you. Sissy?
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Sissy McAndrew. I think you all know who I am. I've been here twenty-one years, and my timing today, I think, just must have been perfect. I wondered if I should come talk to you today or wait until later. And after hearing everything, I know this is the moment I meant to be here before you. Commissioner Edwards mentioned, and I'm gonna say challenge, I'm not gonna call it a problem, the challenges of community confidence and employee morale. And I want to let you know that Taffy Arias came to the Green Chamber meeting on October 5th, did a fantastic presentation. And we usually have about a half-hour presentation, and then question and answers and discussion. And the entire group was totally impressed. We feel that we have someone committed to our community. And my background has really been in community building. And I'm here to tell you now that I'm concerned, that I'm dedicated. I'm gonna do everything I absolutely can to keep this hospital a county hospital. I was very concerned to read in the paper, an article by Ben Fisher, that Commissioner Caston had said this hospital hadn't been good since corporate management left. I don't know if you're aware, I worked under corporate management for two years. I was the development coordinator to raise some money for the Cancer Center. It was a very emotional job. It took a lot of compassion, and I heard a lot of stories. I lost a lot of friends during that time. But we raised the money, and we got our Cancer Center. I stayed quiet through the spring. I didn't want to bring things up. But I'll tell you one thing about corporate management. Here I am, the development coordinator. I went off to a training. I was only allowed to go to trainings that were offered by corporate. I couldn't go out and go to trainings with other community hospitals. So I went off to a training, and I came back, and I found out the CFO had been released, not by the hospital, not by management, by the public. They were all asking me, "Where'd Cliff go?" Well, what are you talking about? You know why Cliff was released? Was fudging the numbers. You know who didn't figure that out? The CEO. So I'm telling you, corporate's not the way to go. I'm very, very concerned about the bias of this Juniper organization that is doing a study to see if we should sell our hospital. I don't think the public is aware that that's going on. I, you know, want to eliminate any bias. I want us to provide public input. This is one of the problems that we were having through the spring. We need the public involved. It's our hospital. We also need to go through good business practices and do some peer matching, and go out and see what other hospitals around the country are doing. This isn't something that some study is gonna give us a real-life approach to what works and what doesn't work. So I hate, you know, I really hope that we'll take the time and work on this together and do what we can, because we need that hospital. I work every day and talk to people that are thinking on coming to this community, or people that are leaving this community. The hospital is a key component, and we need to all work together to find out what we can do to keep this our community hospital. I thank you very much. I'm gonna leave your meeting. Excuse me, please, but I'm headed over to the open house at the Cancer Center. I also want to give my phone number, because I serve on a committee for the hospital. It's called the Collaborative Council. And I think we need to get the word out about that group. It's a number of citizens, some that are out working in the community, some that are previous hospital employees. And we want to hear from people. We want to be your voice. If you don't feel comfortable going in and talking to Taffy or talking to somebody else, we're here as members of the community. So please give me a call, (538) 1337, or my email is C-I-S-S-Y-M-C-A-N-D-R-E-W at gmail.com. We want to communicate. We want to save our hospital. Thank you.
Further public input? Yes, sir.
I'll be brief. I just want to make a couple of points. Oh, Phil Mickie. I love this community. We came to Silver City because of the type of community it was. Very pleased to be here, very comfortable to be here. I have essentially put down roots who would like to leave these roots right here in Silver City. Unfortunately, I'm spending more and more time in Tucson and Las Cruces. I've been to the hospital once. I can say that because of my wife's chronic condition, we have probably been to Tucson thirty times. Because you can't get what you need in Silver City. I'm very concerned that the town, the city itself, will die because of a population that needs a service, and that service is simply not available. There was a time when Silver City was touted as being a tourist and retirement community. You can't get sick here. You can't get old here. You have to go someplace else. And my concern is that more and more people who need a service are going someplace else. We do keep in touch with a Realtor in Arizona. Oracle is a nice area. We like Silver City better. And the only way that we can stay here, and the only way that many people like me can stay here, is when the board of trustees, the commissioners, and the administration of the hospital make the effort to actually do something as opposed to talk about what they think they're gonna do. It's gonna take an investment in time, energy, and money. There are ways that physicians can come to Silver City. There are ways that specialists can be involved in Silver City, but it's not happening. So meanwhile, my wife and I go to Tucson. We spend our money there. We have some meals there, we log, spend money on lodging, we do a little shopping. Much rather do it here in town. And the only way that'll happen is when you have a viable medical service that can actually take care of the people.
Further public input? One more chance. Okay, we're moving on. Minutes. Approve or disapprove the September 19th, 2017 work session, regular session minutes?
I don't know. I'm over that we approve the minutes.
So motion is second to approve the September 19th, 2017 minutes. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, seeing five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. Approve or disapprove the October 11th, 2017 expenditure reports? Linda, can you give us the highlights on those?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The expenditure report, to have it in front of you for approval, is a sum of $2,162,647.81. Included in this are some AP checks totaling $1,758,015.55, and payroll checks totaling $404,632.26, which I'd like for me to go over the expenses that are above $10,000. I went over them. Yeah.
We've established a pattern where she gives us the information. We'll go over it on Tuesday. So that's a no. You don't have to.
Okay.
All right. Any questions on the financial report? Okay, can I get a motion? I'm over we approve the expenditure report, financial report. Finance director? The motion is second to approve the October 11th, 2017 expenditure report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye. Motion passes. New business. Item C. Mr. Maxwell is going to give us some concerns regarding the aggregate operations. I don't know if your light's on or not. Is it red?
Which light? The red one?
Yeah, if it's red, you're good.
It's on. Okay, for the record, my name is Dan Maxwell. And I haven't had the opportunity to talk to everyone on the podium about this memo that I sent to Mrs. Webb. And I wanted to take this time to field any questions that you may have about the content of that memo.
Not at this time.
Okay. Well, I have some questions. And really, I think the memo is self-explanatory, and I don't need to expand a great deal on it. But first question. Was this matter discussed in closed session the day before yesterday? And if so, what's the justification and statute for doing that?
This matter in particular was not discussed in closed session. The only thing that was discussed was whether or not we want to own the pit, the land.
Right.
Or not.
Okay.
Which is the justification for you talking about it in closed session.
Okay. All right. I've got an understanding of that now. Second question. Given the fact that the county was notified no later than the 4th of October that operations down there did not meet the requirements of law, why have operations continued? Business as usual.
So we were under the understanding that you were going to give us a presentation on why you thought they should or should not be remaining. We're not prepared to answer any questions today. So that's probably not gonna happen. If you want to give your presentation, you can.
Well, what presentation were you expecting?
I assumed the same one you gave me.
Okay, well, that wasn't made clear to me.
Yeah. So, yeah, we don't engage in the question and answers from up here.
So does anybody want to discuss anything about this memo?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Maxwell?
I don't have any.
Okay.
And we've given it to management, and they're working towards a solution.
Very good. That's quick. Thank you.
You're good. Have a nice day. Next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove insurance plan change. Do I go over that, or did we, we went over it for very, a lot on Tuesday?
Can you just briefly go through? Just briefly, thank you.
So as I discussed on Tuesday, and to recap that discussion, back during the budget approval process, we looked at lowering cost-saving measures in regards to the insurance plan increases that we've experienced in the last couple of years. The first option we looked at was going with the state Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, which is an HMO plan. The cost savings that were calculated to move that direction was $322,453, roughly. That would move the employees from, currently, they have two choices with Presbyterian, the choice of an HMO or a PPO. This would migrate all employees to the Blue Cross Blue Shield HMO plan. Since Mr. Rideski, being a local vendor here and has served the county very well for the last few years, I felt generally fair to give him a shot at meeting or exceeding those costs and the coverage that the state plan would offer the employees. He went to work and came up with a Blue Cross Blue Shield EPO plan, which would give the county a cost savings of approximately $342,375, and also provide the employees with what we both feel is better coverage. Commissioner Brown asked a question about local coverage. Mr. Rideski was unaware of any physician other than the one that is a cash-only option that would not accept this plan. And it gives the employees a tremendous amount of options nationwide to visit primary care providers, specialist hospitals, and be in network. So our recommendation is to move towards the plan that Mr. Rideski has proposed, which is a Blue Cross Blue Shield EPO. Also with this, he has agreed to reduce the fees. His contract is expiring this month, so we needed to renew that contract as well. And he's agreed to reduce his fees from a flat fee that was previously in his contract to two percent of the premium for the health option only. He doesn't commission off of the others. But, and that calculated to a little over $17,760 cost savings as well. So that would be my recommendation moving forward. Correct. And that's why I said estimated, because that's going to depend on, you know, employees coming and going, time changes, et cetera.
Thank you.
I think it's a good move personally. So do we need to say who we're going with?
Yes, please.
So the recommendation is to choose the Blue Cross Blue Shield New Mexico EPO plan? And to, is the contract for Rideski somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Will you approve the BCBS EPO plan?
There's a motion second to approve the insurance plan change to the BCBSNM EPO plan. She was, it's been a long time, it's been a long time coming. We talked about it a long time. A date on it. Thank you.
This should really help your approval rate.
Yeah. Need all the information.
We're talking about that in a minute.
Exactly.
I would also just like to comment for the record, and I would follow up on the fact that this is, I really appreciate the amount of work that the county manager spent on this. And one of the questions I had is, this is a significant savings for the county. How come we didn't do it sooner? And the answer was that Blue Cross Blue Shield actually would not give the county a bid because our claims were so out of control. And so in addition to the county manager working very hard on getting this done, we've also been able to clean up some stuff and make ourselves more appealing to a more competitive offer. So thanks to everyone who worked on that.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, though, I mean, you gotta remember that sometimes claims happen.
I understand.
And it's not like management can say, "No claims," because that's what it's there for.
That's not what I'm implying.
But, so, yeah, I'm very happy with the situation. I think it's gonna be much better for the employees. The deductible's lower. I think the coverage is better.
Yeah, coverage is much better.
All right, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six, five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Policy 57, establish guidelines and regulations governing the utilization of the lock zone to treat and reduce the severity of opioid-involved overdoses by trained deputies within the Grand County Sheriff's Department? This was brought to us by the sheriff. I think it's a, it's a good deal to be able to reverse opioid overdoses. So do you have anything to add to that?
Mr. Sheriff, I know I wasn't here on the work session, which I apologize, but how many of your officers are trained for this?
Chairman, Commissioner, almost everybody in my office has been gone through the training already. And I just wanted to, I do have a comment, Mr. Chairman. And I wanted to respond to what Commissioner Edwards asked me the other day in regards to if we were to inject somebody or give the nasal spray to an individual without knowing if they were under an opioid overdose, if, what the effects would be. And I researched that, and what I was told is that it would not have any effect, no matter if... no matter if it's not an opioid overdose, if they were injected with the nasal spray, wouldn't cause any other reactions or any-
That's good news.
Good guess.
That's good news. Okay, we all said that that's got to be the hardest thing, is discerning whether or not it's an opioid overdose or not. So, yeah, that's good news. Time to get a motion? Well, let's do discussion after the motion.
Okay.
I move to approve Policy 57.
I second.
Okay, discussion.
So, thank you for getting that information, Sheriff. I just have one other clarifying question. So, under Item B Issuance Number 1, it says that there are two pre-filled warlock syringes without needles or Narcan spray. Which are you going to be using? Which is the sheriff's office going to be using?
We got trained on the nasal spray one, which they did give us the nasal spray. And it does come with two in the kit that we would then receive. So, that's the one where you're going to be utilizing.
Great. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the First Amendment to Agreement Number A 1703 between the County of Grant and New Mexico and Hazer Inc.? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion. Will we approve the First Amendment to Agreement Number A 1703?
I'll second that motion.
The motion is second to approve A 1703. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A 1736, Grant Agreement with the New Mexico Department of Transportation for buckle-up, clicket, or ticket in the selective traffic enforcement program, 100 days and nights of summer, for use by the Grant County Sheriff's Department?
Make a motion.
We approve Agreement Number A 1736.
Second.
There's a motion second to approve A 1736. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A 1737, Contract Renewal for the County Manager. Is there any-
I'll move that we approve Agreement Number A 17 dash 17.
You've got to have more fun than that.
I move that we enthusiastically approve Agreement Number A 17 dash 37, Contract Renewal for our amazing county manager.
For clarification purposes, is there- does your motion include any amendment to what we were presented with on Tuesday? Anything that was changed on Tuesday doesn't need to be amended, because it's 36 hours before this meeting, so. I have the electronic version. Is that the difference? Oh, maybe so.
What are the differences?
Well, there's no change in salary. The only difference was- I now see that I have a hard copy. It doesn't depend on my electronic thing. What we wanted to do was make the two contract employees of the county the same in terms of fringe men. And they were just set by the difference. That apparently was done, so that they're consistent today. Now that I understand it, I second your motion. All right, enthusiastic one. There's a motion and a second to approve A 1737. And just for your knowledge, there is no increase in salary, no increase in benefits, so. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I do have some discussion. Thank you very much for what you do. I know that there's been some stuff put out there in the local radio this morning that, you know, was questioning your approval rating. And you know what? You've done a great job for us, and I appreciate everything you do. As a county commissioner, you make my life easier. And I know you take a lot of shots for us, and, you know, which is your job. And whenever you're manager, not everybody likes the manager, you know? And I think you knew that when you took this position. So, I thank you very much for what you do. And, you know, your approval rating, to me, is up there, so thank you.
I didn't hear that comment. I didn't know what needed to respond to. But I take every opportunity I can to find common ground with you, Commissioner Ramos. And we have common ground here. I greatly appreciate your professionalism, your communication intelligence, your work with contractors. So, I wholeheartedly approve this contract. All right. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A 1738? This is the contract renewal for the county attorney. No changes once again.
I move that we enthusiastically approve Agreement Number A 17 dash 38, Contract Renewal for the county attorney.
I second.
There's a motion second to approve A 1738. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I would just follow that on by saying, thank you, Abby, for making our jobs much easier.
And sometimes more confusing.
And sometimes more confusing. Always willing to unlock the lock.
Well, thank you very much.
And nobody willing to tell us to shut up.
And I do want to express that they didn't ask for rates. They know what kind of finances we're in right now, and they didn't ask for anything. So, I thank you all very much for what you do, and thank you for working with us so well.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye? Motion passes. There's just one aye. Approve or disapprove Agreement for the Professional Services Agreement with the County of Grant and Rydeski and Company?
I move that we approve Agreement Number A 1739.
The motion is second to approve A 1739. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'll just repeat what I said on Tuesday. I really appreciate being able to continue to do this business in our community.
Absolutely. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A 1740, An Agreement Between Grant County and Batik Air for Storage and Parking of Three Rental Vehicles to be Used at the Air Terminal for Rental Car Concession?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Agreement Number A 17 dash 40.
I second that motion.
Motion is second to approve A 1740. Any discussion on the motion?
A question I didn't ask on Tuesday.
Go for it.
Where is the designated parking pad? How to park there dozens of times. I'm curious.
South and west of the terminal, in that vacant area, is what I remember by looking at the map. Am I correct?
I think so. And I have a- I have a- [inaudible].
So, it's right there next to the terminal.
Adjacent to the terminal.
Adjacent to the terminal.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I followed up on Commissioner Brown's question. Do they have rentals anywhere else? Yes, they have three or four in other states where, you know, they have their services. They also have their rental car, their airline services.
It would be nice to get an airplane and be able to rent a car right there. And then, like I said, I hope that the other rental car companies come to the county and ask for a space to do the same thing.
So, I would just like to thank the airport managers and the Batik Air for taking the initiative to do this. I think it would be great for everyone.
All right, we got a motion and a second to approve A 1740. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Resolutions. Approve or disapprove Resolution R 1748, Approving the Development and Implementation of an Asset Management Plan for Grant County. Starting in August on Tuesday, Commissioner, can you order this? Okay. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution Number R 1748.
Second.
I got a motion second to approve R 1748. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R 1749, A Resolution of Support and Financial Commitment for the Corey Camino's Transportation Services for the Fiscal Year 2018.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number R 1729.
The motion?
I second.
And a second to approve R 1749. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution Number R 1750, A Resolution of Support and Financial Commitment for Corey Camino's Transportation Services for the Federal Fiscal Year 2019.
Chairman, I amend ourselves that we approve Resolution Number R 1750.
Second.
The motion is second to approve R 1715. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, I would take a motion to recess the Grant County Board of Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. I call the order. The Grant County Healthcare Claims Board. Approve or disapprove September 2017 Health Plan Claims, the energy fund in the amount of $34,000. I've got to get to here. $223.91, right. But I don't know where they went. I'm not sure. Just don't tell me. There it is. All right, and $32,831.41 went to Hiller Regional Medical Center, and $1,392.50 went to the GRC ambulance for that total.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion. Will we approve? Second.
The motion is second to approve the September 2017 Health Plan Claims. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. She means aye.
I mean, uh, I'm sorry. I'm like- I have to work.
You've got to work way harder to do this thing than you do a piece of paper. Hey, go ahead. About the time you think you got it, it turns off.
That's right. That's exactly right. Yeah, we should- we've got to fix that.
All right, so I would take a motion to adjourn the healthcare claims board.
Second.
All those in favor, say a five, say an aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. I call back the order of the Grant County Commission, and will stand for elected official reports. Sheriff, do you have anything today?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, first I want to clarify with the county clerk on my report. Maybe I'll just change the date from August to September, please, on both of 1 and 2. First, I want to report on the stats for the month of September 2017 in our patrol. We answered 632 calls for service. We took 138 reports to include all types of crimes. And we investigated 27 motor vehicle crashes, which was a big increase. We're handling a lot more of our traffic crashes than we expected. Currently, we made 46 warrants. We did serve 46 warrants. And for the month of September, we had nine burglaries, which is a slight drop from what we had in August. To talk to you a bit about that, we're arresting individuals, and some are still at our detention center. But we're diligently working on other individuals that we're trying to pick up on that. The stats for the month of September in our Civil Process Division, we served 425 papers to include DVOs, subpoenas, and RITs. We did 10 round-trip transports to prisons and other facilities for a total of 5,281 miles. Currently, I have my new hires that I have hired going through extensive in-house training that's being put on by in-house trainers that I have. And I also have the rest of my staff finishing up their白银 training that's required by the state to keep our certification. So, you know, I want to thank my instructors that are putting this training on, because it does take out of their regular duties to do the training for in-house. So, I really appreciate them taking that time and doing that. Also, just like I reported earlier, all my staff has gone through the new mandated training of Narcan, which is the Malaxone, which is a mandate from the state. And also, during this training, I was able to graciously, the trainer did a- I put on this training, was also able to put on and train the trainer. And I was able to get one of my staff employees to go through that. So, we will have an in-house staff personnel doing the training for us as new people come on, or as we need to. Because I perceive this being a白银 training, also dealing with Narcan. So, I'm pleased we were able to get that done also. Last week, I did lose another individual who retired. You know, I'm pleased he did his 20 years of service at Grant County. His name was Michael Valenta. He had retired and lived on, so, you know, he was a great employee, and I hated to lose him. But people want to retire, and you can't blame them for retiring. Currently, we are working on updating our body cam policy in regards to our new downloading system that we were able to purchase, that I was able to use funding to purchase, a new downloading software that we're going to be able to download all our video and pictures and stuff. And it's going to be entered into our evidence room. So, now, it's all going to be done as evidence in our evidence room. If anybody needs a copy of it or that, they have to go to my evidence custodian to retrieve that stuff. So, that's an upgrade from what we were doing. So, I'm currently working on the policy and making that changes. So, I should have that policy ready for you guys for the next meeting. We are preparing for the Halloween event coming up. There's going to be a lot of activities, trunk or treats, and a lot of Halloween trick-or-treating. And I just asked the community to be observant of our little ones out there, because they know how they like to be out, running around, crossing the street and that. So, I just asked the public to be very observant for our little ones out there. The staff has been extremely busy. As you know, we're working with new hires and trying to get these individuals out on the streets. They've been covering a lot more than what they usually do. And I'm very proud of them for doing that, keeping up with the workload. And we just continue to move forward and pray for the best that we're able to get these individuals out as soon as possible. Unfortunately, three of them are uncertified. They will have to go to the academy. But, you know, right now, with all the training they're getting, they should be able to be out doing FTO before they go to the academy. So, and FTO is still training, so getting them prepared for that. And I think that's all I have. I've kind of bounced around on my report here. But I have nothing else unless you guys have any questions.
Any questions for the sheriff this morning?
Sheriff, do you happen to have someone at the presentation today over at the conference center? This state police is putting out a presentation, I believe?
No, we aren't. Uh, I'm not sure. I don't think it's today. I think it's the 25th.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so, but right now, currently, we're doing in-house training at the conventions now. We have been utilizing that facility a lot. Like the gentleman said the other day, we do utilize it a lot, and we really appreciate it for that, because it has made it a lot easier for us to be able to do all this training. And it's not just training my staff. A lot of this training that we're doing involves the Tri-City and the police department. So, we're collaboratively training all the agencies around our community. So, that's been very helpful and beneficial to them, also to- other than that, I don't have any, you know.
Further questions?
Sheriff, as always, thank you for the great work that you and your department do. My question is, the number of traffic crashes that you guys were called out, is that an actual increase in crashes? Or are you having to answer more calls for crashes because the state patrol is answering fewer?
That is correct. We have had discussions in regards to this, and they have- We're just doing a little bit more now. So, we have seen an increase of us handling more of the crashes than what they were doing for us.
And this is an ongoing conversation?
It- I don't think it's ongoing anymore. I think we're set where we're at already, and that's the way it's going to be.
I believe the city police captain told us they were increasing staffing here, and that mainly they were going to be doing highway patrols, which includes covering crashes, doesn't it?
That is correct.
What I heard was an intention to do more of those things.
That was my thought also.
And I was in the same meeting you were at, Commissioner.
Yes, you were.
That's what I wish there is, that either they are going to have more officers or be able to cover more and help out more, so that you all could cover the domestic type of issues.
And we have had- we did have a meeting that my captain and my lieutenant attended with them. Then I had to step in, and I did get confirmation email from them on what they were going to be doing. So, that's where I'll leave it. We're just going to continue to do what we have to do here in the county for ourselves.
Well, I appreciate that attitude. I wonder if you could tell us what it is they are going to be doing-
I wonder if you could tell us what it is they are going to be doing with more staff if it's not more patrol covering, including cat crashes?
What, what the email, what the email I received from them said, they will help us handle, um, crashes that involve death or great bodily harm, but anything minor, like, minor crashes that have involved minor property damage or minor injury, that they, they will not respond to, that they expect us to do. And that if they, we are extremely busy, then they will help us with the crashes.
And so instead, they're focused on what? Okay, I thought maybe the email would have said something along those lines.
No.
Well, I, I think we, we did a good job opening discussion, and I think the discussion needs to continue. I don't think we need to drop it. Again, I, I appreciate your attitude, just having to do what you gotta do, but I, I think we really need to continue the discussion.
Right. And, and, you know, I do give them that they do wanna, they will help us, they will respond to calls if we're busy, and, and my, my biggest thing is, is with the staff we're running with right now, a traffic crash does take up quite a bit of staff, especially on a highway. You have to sometimes close a highway, you have to have extra staff out there to control the traffic and make sure no, that nothing else happens, so that ties up my guys, but we're gonna do what we have to do.
So I would just follow up by saying, I also appreciate that attitude that, um, I think we need to keep that conversation going because, um, the state patrol has obviously invested a significant amount of, um, money in increasing the, um, patrol size, patrol group size here, and, um, they should be taking on responsibility of crashes. And I'm assuming that, um, you don't really know, um, if it involves great bodily harm or death or if it's minor until you get there.
Right, that is correct.
That's a problem. If well.
Okay.
I just have one question, um, just in order to save some mileage and time for your staff, are you able to start utilizing the shuttle that you can, for DOC transports in Las Cruces to save the trips to Los Angeles?
That's great, um, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Manito Webb, I did look into that with my Civil Division, and, um, we are utilizing it, but it's based on if this individual has been, uh, that there's already a judgment and sentencing where they have to be transported.
Right.
So, yes, we're, we're, we utilize it when we can.
Anything else?
Thanks, Sheriff, appreciate everything you do.
Uh, Mr. Yetta?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, and, uh, Sheriff, I've been up in Pinos Altos since nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five, and, uh, I see a lot of patrol there, and I really appreciate it. For the longest time, uh, there wasn't very much, uh, patrols up there, but I thank you very much. I feel a lot safer and, uh, appreciate everything that you do. Uh, congratulations on our county manager and our county attorney for renewing their contract, for starters, and, uh, I do apologize I didn't make it here on Tuesday. I actually had a doctor's appointment down in Tucson, Arizona. We had a Economic Development Infrastructure Policy Committee meeting on October fourth, and, um, that was, uh, it was a very interesting meeting due to the fact that we talked about the wind project, they talked about the, um, solar work program, and I do have it in detail where it really helps out on economic development. Torrance Colony also has on their third wind project, and, uh, the New Mexico, uh, Economic Development, uh, meeting, uh, and they talked about rural county issues. So I really enjoy that, uh, committee that I was appointed on. During the Board of Directors on October thirteenth of two thousand seventeen, the evening, I spoke, uh, had a discussion with Mrs. Carol Bowman Musket. She's actually county commissioner from McKinley County, and, uh, in January, she actually recommended me to be on the Native American Policy Committee, and I never didn't think very much about it, um, in January, so she brought it up again on Thursday that evening with the President Susan Flores from Otero County, so actually, I was right there in the spot, been appointed for the Native American Policy Committee, and I'm really looking forward to doing that. It was quite interesting going to the Board of Directors, and I do apologize I couldn't stay very long on the Board of Directors meeting. Uh, it's really nice to see a bunch of old friends and all the most powerful people that run the state, uh, gathered at the Conference Center here in Silver City, New Mexico. However, I did have another engagement that, uh, that I actually dedicated myself, and I was the first annual of the meeting of the universities with Mexico, Costa Rica, and Western New Mexico University. I was honored to sit on the Round Table, not only on ecotourism, economic development, uh, medical, agricultural, and many other committees. Uh, it was a very interesting, uh, first annual universities, and I hope it continues, and I think Dr. Shepherd has really taken the reins and done a great job about creating bridges with Mexico. Uh, I do have an employee under Workman's Comp at this monument by the name of Brian, uh, Brian, uh, Bronn Gary, and, uh, he will be returning on Monday, October twenty-third, uh, due to the fact that he did hurt his knee being out in the field, and I guess he actually tripped, and there was an issue on that. Uh, I did get my, uh, I did get my evaluation from the state of New Mexico, and that was under Susana Martinez Governor and John Monford, and I do want to make a statement that, uh, under data management, it was, uh, no discrepancy. Under general valuation, there was no discrepancy. Under land valuation, there was a slight discrepancy due to the fact that we don't have full disclosure here in the state of New Mexico, and, uh, the staff is minimal on, uh, we can do a lot of the field visits and reappraisals and so on. Mapping Department, it was in compliance with no discrepancy. Under agricultural, there was, uh, it was not in compliance due to the fact that, uh, there was some issues on agricultural properties serving the special method evaluation, and they should be reviewed more in a current manner. And I would like to thank our county, uh, I would like to thank our county attorney on our protest, and, uh, we did have a couple of issues on agricultural special method evaluation, and Abby, thank you very much for your diligence and what you did on that. My chief appraiser, uh, my chief deputy, um, Mr. Ma, uh, Mr. James Deans, actually passed the course of the income approach to valuation and got a hundred percent, and that's the first time I've ever seen anybody get a hundred percent on the income approach to valuation. He is scheduled to take another course in, uh, in, uh, in, uh, in December about land valuation, so he's on his process of being a New Mexico certified appraiser. I do thank, uh, my chief appraiser, uh, Mr. Trujillo, wrapping up the protest. We had had over a hundred and thirty protests. Uh, matter of fact, when it came down to go to the protest board, uh, four of them actually withdrew at the last minute. I do thank her for actually getting our warrant and abstract together, and, uh, she has done a sensational job, and I do appreciate not only her, but all my employees. We do have a conference for the Assessor's Affiliates. We over have a hundred participating out of the, the whole state that's gonna be held here in Silver City, New Mexico. Actually, it's gonna be my first conference ever within the last thirty-five years that I've been here in the Assessor's Office. I do thank Lorene Zunick on her wonderful coordinating, and that was such a massive responsibility that she has done. And, uh, I would like to state that our theme is the Great Southwest. I actually, um, I actually would like to state that, uh, other diplomats, that, uh, other individuals, diplomats, they're gonna show up. I invited Senator Morales, Representative Martinez, Representative Dow, and Representative Switzer. She actually was the one that actually got the ball started, Miss, Representative Switzer, because of the agenda and what's on the agenda for the Assessor's Affiliate. On our legislative, uh, information, it's actually the tiny homes, manufactured homes, modular homes, and I guess there's quite enormous interest of what's gonna be happening with these prop, with these properties under tiny homes, manufactured homes. And I forgot, our esteemed county commissioner, Harry Brown, is actually going to, uh, welcome our sisters here in Grant County, so I thank you for, for you accepting that. You got it. And, uh, and actually, we're also gonna be talking about, uh, valuation maintenance and defer valuation maintenance and net new, and it's a very interesting issue because we really dissected that out, and I think we're gonna give a little bit more light to the, to the situation itself. Uh, one other thing is, is I did have an opportunity to meet our new director by the name of Bryson Fraser. He's actually was a budget analyst there at the state of New Mexico. The affiliate is very, very happy that he is on board. I got to meet him, he's thirty-three years old, and he is one of the wonderful guys I have met , uh, within the last quite a few years under directors. They're also going to, uh, hire for state assessed property, and there's gonna be four, three individuals for state assessed property, and a chief bureau on state assessed property, and, uh, chief bureau for the appraisal portion of it. And I do stand for questions.
Um, I didn't have, um.
Yes, ma'am.
Question. Can you, do you have the figures yet to be able to tell us what the total net new for this past fiscal year was?
Yes, I do. I can, I can go ahead and get that on over to you. Absolutely, I can get that on over to you. I'll go ahead and email it, and then I'll email it to the county manager and all the other commissioners.
And do you have, um, a target for net new for this year? A goal or a target for how much net new you're looking at for this year?
Matter of fact, uh, the only target net new that I can pretty much express is actually on our billing permits, and, uh, and I'm so glad you brought that up because we only have until the end of December to put these on the book for the year two thousand and eighteen. Actually, we're writing up a, a contract, like I asked you, not a contract, but actually, uh, a plan, uh, with our county manager and, you know, the commissioners about the two thousand and eighteen years on net new and value unit maintenance, and also the reappraisal plan, and we're working on that at this moment. Uh, we're pretty much late in the game right now on the net new, and it's only on billing permits itself. Thank you, Sheriff.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Have a nice day. Madam Clerk, no report today? Madam Manager, do you have anything for us today? No? Okay. Remove to Commissioner's report, um, Mr. Brown, Dr. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. The main thing I want to draw attention to, uh, hopefully, I guess, for being broadcast, I always feel odd talking to folks who already know what I'm talking about, but, uh, is the proposal by Holloman Air Force Base for increased practice flights over our area, with Gila Forest, the Gila Wilderness, uh, and near Silver City. Uh, the proposal to increase training flights back to ten thousand flights per year and to drop up to thirty thousand flares and loads of radar deflecting chaff is completely inconsistent with this area's culture and its economy. It's also contrary to the purpose of this nation's decision to make the Gila Wilderness the first declared wilderness area in the country. At that time, Congress and the President agreed on the importance to the nation to setting aside an area to remain untrammelled by human activity, to reap the spiritual benefits of spending time in vast natural habitats, communion with nature, experiencing solitude, contemplating our place in the universe. Needless to say, thirty jet flights per day with sonic moons, flares, and chaff are completely inconsistent with these purposes. I urge residents to contact Holloman Air Force Base and our federal representatives to demand an extension of the public comment period and demand holding a public hearing here in Silver City, which was, uh, not part of their original public outreach. They did not even notify us about, or at least notify us properly, about the hearings that were being held in TRC in Las Cruces. Other than that, I just, uh, gonna do my normal update. The cap entity, uh, recently projected, Kim Abate, I believe it was, the ISC non-voting rep on the cap entity, projected spending another twenty million dollars in this coming twelve-month period. Money that we should be making better use of. That's all.
Thank you.
So I would, um, uh, just follow on with Commissioner Brown's comments about the Holloman Air Force Base, um, issue. I think it is really, really important for the public, um, to take the time to, um, contact the Holloman Air Force Base, uh, Public Relations Department, and also Senator Udall's office and Senator Heinrich's office and Congressman Parrish's office about this issue. I have that information, I have all of that contact information and the specific folks who are, um, at Lachlan Air Force Base, who are, um, the, uh, what do I want to say, the higher-ups of the folks at Holloman as well. So if anybody wants that information, get it from me. The other thing I want to talk about, um, uh, just briefly is, um, in response to the public comment about, um, the purpose of, uh, what we're doing with Juniper Advisory, and, um.
This is what we say to the contract.
That's right. That's exactly right. Okay, I was not gonna go, I was not gonna go off the rails. But thank you, Abby, for making sure before I did. This is why, this is why we renewed your contract. Uh, the comment I was gonna make is that, um, uh, one of the very specific things that Juniper Advisory has the capacity to do is share with us what other hospitals, large size, are doing in this country and how they're addressing, um, what's happening with healthcare. So I believe that this study does address, uh, some of the concerns that were raised in health care.
Okay.
No, I, I do agree with, uh, we found something else we agree on. I, I was really, um, I was really dumbfounded when I saw the reports last week on, on the way they want to use the wilderness, and I totally agree with you all. I think we need to try and have some public hearings to let the people speak their mind. I mean, a lot of people live here because it's such a peaceful place and, and such a good place to live, and, uh, I think that would be very disturbing, so I, I totally agree. I've been in tons of meetings these last few weeks, you know, from receiving an award for NMED for the county to cap, cap any meetings, echo watershed meetings, sheriff meetings, and, uh, everything's been very interesting. Uh, it's, I don't think it's things that, uh, I think that these things that we've discussed are a bunch of things we've already discussed in the past. We're, we're working through the echo watershed meeting, uh, echo watershed group to, uh, to keep working with the Twin Sister Creek, uh, project. We're inviting for the next meeting, we're inviting game and fish and NMED to participate in our conversation. So hopefully, we have a good meeting then. Um, I think all this is just preparing for the, for Santa Fe in, in January, so, uh, whenever all our senators and representatives are up there, we can go and give them some, uh, give them some kind of presentation and hopefully get their support for our projects. So that's basically what we've been working on, and, uh, that's all I've got, Commissioner. I'll have to pull that data, I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I guess I get to be last unless somebody, and maybe anybody else has something. So I really appreciate the new iPads that, that are increasingly better than they were last week, slightly. But, um, the only thing I have to say today is, is I was, I was quoted, so I have to, I have to state exactly what I did say. Uh, the constituent said that, I said that everything was, has been bad since corporate management left. And ironically, um, the truth of the matter is, is that may just be a coincidence, but I do believe that when they had corporate management and they had corporate consultants on staff, uh, not on staff, but here, that they had a third set of eyes, which they haven't had since about the time that they started struggling. There's also another item, uh, whenever, uh, the Medicare Medicaid rules changed and they quit being funded through, um, the safety net, as, as much as they were, that also made them struggle. I think they were slow to react to a lot of those issues. I in no way want to imply that Miss Arius is the problem because she hasn't been here long enough to be the problem. There were problems, several of them. And I, I hope that nobody takes to the notion that one other, maybe the same person, I don't remember, uh, stated that we had a preordained notion that we were going to sell the hospital. That is untrue. Let Juniper do their due diligence. diligence, let them give us our third, our third set of eyes, and we did that in open session, we hired them in open session, let them do their job, and when we get the, the information back, then we will share that with you. Um, I didn't go off the rails today.
You can jump up.
And so that's all I have to say.
Just one more thing. I, I'd like for us to invite all the radio stations to come in and participate in our meetings, you know, because there's a lot of information being put out there that is just totally one-sided, and I think if we get the reporters to come in here and actually, um, do their due diligence to, to investigate and put both sides out there, which I think is their job, um, I think they ought to be invited to come in here and do it, because like I said, a lot of these stories being put out there are one-sided. It's, it's not like the newspaper where they kind of give the, you know, the two different, uh, I, I guess, suggestions or, or appearances. So, uh, I, I would really like to see if we can drop the letter and invite all the radio stations to come into our meetings, even though it's broadcast. Um, I don't think the due diligence of investigation has been put, put forward to, to, uh, properly comment and get proper comments out there to, to the people, because radio was big here. I mean, it's, it's huge. So I think we need to put that out there.
Anybody else? I take a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
All those in favor? Sixty-five saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.